Good morning. It is 9:00 AM. Welcome to the September 17, 2018 City Council Meeting. Let the record reflect that all City Council members and officials are present. Please stand firstly for an invocation, then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we come before you this morning to invoke your blessings on what we do here in our capacity as members of the Punta Gorda City Council. We ask your guidance, help in all that we do and say, and ask that the words of our mouths and the hidden meditation in our hearts be always acceptable in your sight. Furthermore, we ask that you provide guidance to those who support our work, both staff and citizens, and turn their hearts towards right-thinking and fairness for all. All these things we pray. Amen.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Just a meeting reminders. Tonight at 5:01, we have a budget hearing here in this council chambers, and at 1 o'clock on September 26, we will have the first of several meetings to select the firm to do the citywide master plan. So that will be a special meeting on September 26 at 1 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, we have two special proclamations this morning. The first is Community Planning Month, and that one's Gary.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas changes in economic and population growth affect all Florida cities, towns, counties, and whereas community planning and plans can help manage these changes in a way that provide better choices for how people work, live, play, and whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in the decisions that shape the future of our community, and whereas the full benefits of planning come through public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and is an opportunity to recognize the city's planning commission and professionals whose efforts improve the lives of all citizens, and whereas the members of the American Planning Association celebrate this month to highlight the value that sound planning implementation make to the quality of our communities. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim October 2018 as Community Planning Month, passed and duly adopted in this regular session the 17th day of September 2018. Signed Rachel Kiesling, and accepting will be Mitchell Austin.
At our new podium.
Good morning. For the record, Mitchell Austin. I'm here today with another hat on as the Vice Chair of the Promised Land Section of the Florida Chapter of the American Planning Association. And I'm the mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Thank you so much for this proclamation. I would, usually am not at a loss for words, but today I wanted to, with your indulgence, read a few things from the Code of Ethics. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and we pledge ourselves to this Code of Ethics, and we take these responsibilities very seriously. The Planner's Responsibility to the Public. A planner's primary obligation is to serve the public interest. A planner owes allegiance to the concept of the public interest that is formulated through continuous and open debate. The Planner's Responsibility to Clients and Employers. The planner owes diligent, this is my favorite word, creative and competent performance to the work and the pursuit of a client's and employer's interests. Such performance should be consistent with a planner's faithful service to the public interest. Planner's Responsibility to the Profession and to Colleagues. A planner should contribute to the development of the profession by improving knowledge and techniques, making the work relevant to the solutions of community problems, and increasing the public's understanding of planning activities. Those are the preambles for a very long document about what our ethical obligations are as planners to the communities in which we serve, and we take those responsibilities very seriously, and it is a great honor and pleasure to accept this proclamation today. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I think your organization needs a longer title. You could fit some more words into that, that one. Okay, next we have American Business Women's Day, and Nancy will be presenting that proclamation.
It's my honor. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Whereas the American Business Women's Association has been building a tradition based on its continuing efforts to promote the educational and professional advancement of women, and whereas a United States Senate and House Joint Resolution recognizing September 22 as American Business Women's Day was passed in 1983, a proclamation by President Reagan followed the same year, and whereas this special day gives all Americans an opportunity to recognize the contributions made by working women in such areas as historical heritage, civic accomplishments, cultural and intellectual achievements, betterment of the business world and communities, and in the development of an informed and responsible citizenry. And whereas September 22, 2018, marks the 69th anniversary of the American Business Women's Association. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim that September 22 shall be known as American Business Women's Day, in salute to more than 40,000 ABWA members for their efforts toward opening doors of educational opportunity, passed and duly adopted in a regular session the 17th day of September 2018, City of Punta Gorda, Florida. Signed Rachel Kiesling, Mayor, and accepting will be Audrey Muccio and Patty Dyson.
Would you like to say a few words?
We accept this award on behalf of the Punta Gorda Chapter of the American Business Women's Association. We are proud to offer scholarships and educational opportunities to women in the community and to college students seeking a four-year degree. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say one thing, and that is the scholarships that we give out go to Charlotte County students and women in business here.
Okay, next it's introduction of board or committee member nominees. If your name is in the running for a board or committee position and you would like to introduce yourself, now would be the time. Anybody want to introduce themselves for a board or committee? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the public hearings, and first of which is ZA-06-18.
Yes, and this is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. Ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Regulating Districts, Section 3.13, Special Residential Overlay District, Section L, I believe, Storage of Vehicles and Watercraft, clarify provisions of the storage of small watercraft on racks on a dock, renumbering accordingly, providing for conflict and severability, and providing effective date.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official. And this amendment came about due to the fact that kayaks were allowed on the docks, or small watercraft were allowed on the docks, but not on racks. So we amended the code to now allow the racks and any small watercraft that can fit on the racks. It will still allow for the small watercraft to be stored on the dock as long as it's not leaned up against the seawall or on the seawall cap. And per council's direction, we were told to do two kayaks or purse, or small watercraft per rack. The two racks per dock were based on the comments from the LDR Committee and Planning Commission.
Yes, and clarification, the subsection that's involved is 3.13, Brands 1.
Thank you. Questions for Lisa? Go ahead.
Lisa, at what point do we decide that the LDR Committee's suggestions should be written into an ordinance? Because that is not what we decided when we discussed it earlier.
What was, there was no, when council discussed it earlier in May, it just said the consensus was to allow a maximum of two kayaks to be stored on a rack.
Right.
We just took Planning Commission and LDR Committee comments into consideration because they didn't want to see a plethora of racks on docks. So we can change it at council's direction if you want to change it. That's not a problem.
When we had our discussion about it a few months ago, we were very specific that we didn't want to put a limitation on it, and we didn't want to put a limitation on the materials that they would use to construct them. So I just wondered where that came from.
We just took those comments into consideration.
You can certainly amend it and allow as many as you want.
I mean, I don't know how many people it would affect, but I remember specifically we had a conversation that there would not be a minimum number of, or a maximum number of racks allowed. I don't know what everybody's pleasure is on that.
I guess I would like to wait until after the public hearing to see what people have to say.
Any other questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
I'll wait till after the...
Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on ZA-06-18, now would be the time. Please make your way to the podium. You have three minutes. Would anybody like to speak on ZA-06-18? Make your way to the podium.
This is a new podium.
Yes.
Very nice. Wendy Mueller, I just kind of sided with Lynn Matthews in that if you have a 100-foot dock, two racks might, or might not be, too little. If you have a 40-foot dock, two racks will fill the dock, or thereabouts. So maybe it should be written proportionately.
Thank you. Anybody else? ZA-06-18. Last call for ZA-06-18.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. What's your pleasure? Leave the limitation in, take it out, rewrite it? I mean, I'm okay with it.
I think a point was just made that was a very good idea. You know, if you've got somebody that's got 120 feet, 130 feet of dock, two racks, and they may have a very large house and a very large family, et cetera, maybe we could put a little verbiage in there that says one rack per 40 linear feet of seawall or something like that. So a standard 80-foot lot would have two racks, and 120-foot lot would be able to have more racks, but the 40-foot lot would only have one rack instead of having two crowded racks or something like that. I don't know. I'm just going to put that up for conversation, but that might be a possibility.
I would rather see us do up to two racks, up to 80 feet of dock, or something along those lines, and that way they can decide.
Yeah, that's fine with me. That sounds good. Keep it simple.
Because otherwise you're penalizing somebody who has less waterfront than others, and you know, it's...
I'm not going to argue that with you.
It would be more consistent with the way we do the assessment.
I would agree with that. The other question that was asked of me was, what about personal watercraft? And I said, well, that's kind of not really a small, what we have in the intent here. So do we need to clarify that? That it's not including, you know, the...
This says small watercraft, such as kayaks, canoes, and paddleboards.
Right. I understand the non-motorized.
It's not specific. It just says such as, so we're not limiting it. If the small watercraft, such as a dinghy, can fit completely on the dock, it can be stored on the dock. It can be that way now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. You also just, I'm sorry.
So is it intended that personal watercraft, the jet skis, would be included in this?
It has before. They've been, people do store them on the docks now. We've never had any complaints about a jet ski. Some of them have the jet ski lifts that go up on the dock, and that's where they store them. As long as it's not on the seawall or the seawall cap, we've allowed it.
I think we should...
But the racks are intended for, other than the personal watercraft?
Correct.
So what was your language, Gary?
Well, actually it was Lynn's language that we adopted. Mine was too complicated.
I would suggest amending the language to say up to two racks, up to an 80-foot dock, or something along those lines. I don't know how we would word it professionally.
I think we could say two racks per 80 linear feet of dock. Up to 80 feet. And that way, if they have more than 80 feet, then they can get another two racks.
You're allowed two racks up to 80 feet of dock, and over 80 feet of dock?
It's open.
It's open.
Yeah, okay.
Does that change?
Well, I mean, if you've got a family with kids and they all have a kayak, which we do have some families in PGI that the entire family does all that outdoorsy kind of stuff, I just think we're penalizing them unfairly, and I think we should take that into account. The whole idea behind this, when I first brought it up, was the fact that we really needed to try to make some orderly fashion of having these vessels on the docks because there are people that, we're putting them everywhere, and I think this will make it much more professional-looking and cleaner, and probably safer, too, because I think the weight of the units on top of a rack are going to, you know, have more weight to it if there's a high-water episode, and they don't get to it fast enough. So...
So if you have a dock of 80 feet or less, you're entitled by right to two racks?
Yes.
And then if it's above 80 feet, then you can have more than two racks?
Yes.
As many as you can fit on your dock?
Yeah, because people are not going to destroy their dock.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to have 12 racks on a dock.
Oh, I just want to make sure that that's what your intent was.
And I don't want to make it real complicated either.
Yeah, I would agree that, keep it simple. But if Lisa says you're saying that, you know, jet skis and dinghies already on a dock, but they're not intended for, or you're saying if somebody wants to store their dinghy on the rack, they could do that?
We didn't specify. We said such as, so we gave an example of what could be on the rack, but we didn't make it.
You've got people here that have rowing skulls, too, and they might, and they don't weigh very much, they're just long, and they might want to stack too high, and that would have given them that opportunity.
Yeah.
So the next question that we haven't addressed, maybe we've implied, is that the rack itself, is it still going to be limited to two per rack?
I think so.
Yes, I think so, too.
Because we saw some that were very tall and had multiple...
Right. That's why I wanted to make sure we just...
We don't want them to put a forklift on their docks so that they...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think it makes more sense, and it allows for good visibility from land side as well. So that was a concern when we had the discussion before, that we wanted to make sure that they weren't hugely obtrusive on the dock, so you could see over them. So I'm good with that.
So can we amend that? Add that language in?
Yes, we will.
Okay, so do we have a motion with that?
I would make a motion to approve the ordinance, ZA-06-18, with the changes recommended by council today.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve with the changes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have ZA-08-18.
And this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, providing requirements for the location and permitting of medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities located within the municipal boundaries of Punta Gorda, consistent with Chapter 381 Florida statutes, by amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter 26, Land Development Regulations, Article 3, Regulating Districts, amending Section 3.8 NC Neighborhood Center District, Subsection A, permitted principal uses and structures by adding a new sub-paragraph 18 relating to pharmacies, and a new sub-paragraph 19 relating to medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities, amending Section 3.9 CC City Center District, Subsection A1A, permitted this principal uses and structures by adding medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities, amending Section 3.10 HC Highway Commercial District, Subsection A1A, permitted principal uses and structures by adding medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities, providing, amending Section 3.17 MO Medical Overlay District, Subsection A, permitted principal uses and structures by adding a new sub-paragraph 17 relating to pharmacies, and a new sub-paragraph 18 relating to medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official. And this proposed ordinance permits medical marijuana treatment center dispensing facilities, as well as pharmacies, to be located in the neighborhood center, city center, highway commercial, and medical overlay zoning districts.
Questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on ZA-08-18, now would be the time. Anybody like to speak on ZA-08-18? Please make your way to the podium. You have three minutes. ZA-08-18, last call.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
I would like to ask a question.
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, I can understand the medical overlay district. We don't have it in there for pharmacy right now, but in the neighborhood center, what was the rationale for adding that one?
The medical overlay district is just an overlay district. The hospital is actually in the neighborhood center zoning district. That's the underlying zoning district.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think in this case, because they have to be where pharmacies are, I think this is where it is. So I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve ZA-08-18. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next we have one quasi-judicial hearing, V-02-18, and we will now be swearing in any participants.
Yes, anyone who will be providing testimony or evidence on V-02, just 18, please rise to be sworn by the city court at this time.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. When you're ready to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, and indicate that you have been sworn.
This is V-02-18, request by Warren R. Ross Esquire, agent for James E. Campbell and Gail M. Campbell, property owners pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 16.10 Punta Gorda Code to allow a rear yard setback of 7.9 feet at its closest point and 9.7 feet at its furthest point instead of 20 feet, as is required per Chapter 26, Section 3.13D Punta Gorda Code, to construct a new screen enclosure on an existing non-conforming pool deck at a single-family residence located in a general single-family zoning district. The legal description is Punta Gorda Isles, Section 7, Block 66, Lot 20, also known as 1609 Montier, I'm sorry.
Montier.
Montier, sorry. Montier Court, Punta Gorda, Florida, Charlotte County.
Good morning, Lisa Hannan, zoning official, and I have been sworn. I'll go ahead and read the staff report. There are certain criterias that have to be met to approve a variance request. Number one, that special conditions or circumstances exist which are particular to the size and characteristics of the land structure or building involved, which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district. Per the records of the Charlotte County Property Appraiser in the City of Punta Gorda, the swimming pool and deck were constructed in 1976. At that time, the required rear yard setback was 15 feet. Per the survey provided, the swimming pool and deck has an existing rear yard setback of 9.7 feet and 7.9 feet at the closest points. No evidence of a prior variance can be found at this, and it is unknown why or how the pool was constructed at this setback. At the time the pool was constructed, zoning did not review pool permit plans. The property is similar in size and configuration as many other properties in the general single-family zoning district. There are several still existing swimming pools that were originally constructed with setbacks, which are now considered existing non-conforming based on the current development regulations. The lot's size and shape are similar to that of many others in the area. Number two, the strict and literal enforcement of the zoning regulations would create an undue hardship as distinguished from a mere inconvenience on the property owners. Physical handicaps or disability of the applicant and other considerations may be considered where relevant to the request. The strict and literal enforcement of the zoning regulations would not allow the screen enclosure over the existing swimming pool deck. The property was purchased in 2010 with the conditions existing as they are today. The applicant's agent has provided staff with a letter from Mr. Campbell's medical provider, which explains that Mr. Campbell suffers from a medical disability that can make a patient more susceptible to developing infectious diseases. While staff finds no evidence that the current regulations would create an undue hardship from a mere inconvenience, having an open pool can attract a great deal of birds and ducks, which regularly land in the pool and on the deck, leaving an unsanitary condition to the pool water and pool deck. In addition, an open pool does not protect the user from the pool, of the pool, from insects and potential insect-borne viruses. While there are still many existing swimming pools and a few newly constructed swimming pools in Punta Gorda Isles that do not have a screen enclosure, the building official opines that a screen enclosure is safer, is a safer enclosure method for swimming pools than just a fence. Number three, that such hardship is not shared generally by other properties in the same zoning district and in the same vicinity. This condition still exists for several properties within Punta Gorda Isles and therefore is potentially shared by other properties in the same zoning district and within the same vicinity. Number four, the granting of the variance would not be injurious or to or incompatible with the contiguous uses, the surrounding neighborhood, or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. There are neighboring properties that have screen enclosures over their pools, therefore the request would not be incompatible with contiguous uses within the neighborhood. Number five, that the variance requested is the minimum modification of the regulations at issue that will afford relief. In order to install the screen enclosure, the request is the minimum modification of the regulation at issue. Number six, the condition giving rise to the requested variance has not been created by any person presently having an interest in the property and/or conditions cannot be reasonably corrected or avoided by the applicant. The existing condition and configuration of the property was not created by any person presently having an interest in the property. The pool and deck were constructed in 1976, and the required rear yard setback at that time was 15 feet. The pool and deck were permitted prior to zoning review of such structures. There are no records showing that a screen enclosure was ever constructed on the pool deck. The existing non-conforming conditions of the property cannot be reasonably corrected or avoided by the applicant. Number seven, the variance requested does not involve any use which is prohibited in the district where the property is located, and the variance does not involve any use of the property which is prohibited. The variance is consistent with the City of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan. Additional findings, the applicant has provided two letters of support from adjacent property owners. The applicant's agent has provided staff with a letter from Mr. Campbell's medical provider outlining potential health concerns by using an open pool. The canal maintenance supervisor has provided staff with evidence that the seawall and seawall cap have been replaced at 1609 Montier and completed on June 14 of 2018. And the City of Punta Gorda building official provided the following statement. In regards to the variance request for a screen enclosure at this address, we prefer to see a screen enclosure rather than a fence. A screen enclosure typically provides a higher level of safety and is more substantial, a more substantial barrier against the accidental drowning of children. An open pool is especially attractive to children who also happen to be out of school and frequently unsupervised during the hot summer months. Conclusions, the request for a screen enclosure is the minimum modification of the regulations at issue that will afford the relief for the property owner. The condition is giving rise to the requested variance is a required setback of 20 feet that has been in place since 1984, prior to the purchase of the property by the current owner. Staff recommended conditions, if the variance request is approved and the swimming pool or pool deck are ever demolished, any reconstruction must meet the development standards in place at time of reconstruction. Based on the information provided at the time of the respective meetings, the Punta Gorda Development Review Committee and the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Maintenance Advisory Committee recommended denial of the request. However, since the time of those two meetings, the applicant's agent provided evidence from Mr. Campbell's medical provider regarding the applicant's disability, which is recognized by the Americans with Disability Act, and requires reasonable accommodations be made. Reasonable accommodations, including the granting of variance, so that the applicant can enjoy his property just as his neighbors can, but with adequate consideration of his disability. The law does not allow... The law does not allow staff to be more specific of the medical disability of the applicant. And based on the above criteria findings and conclusions, along with additional evidence provided by the applicant's agent, Puntagorda Urban Design Division recommends approval of the request.
Yes.
We've, we've dealt with this issue on a number of occasions, both with this council and the council's prior tests. The only way that I could not go along with this, if there was compelling reason from the neighbors, the applicant has supported just the opposite letters of support from the safety standpoint, 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 it seems to me to be a no-brainer. So I think that we should just go ahead and forward with this unless there's any objections that I'm not aware of.
Well, this is a quasi judicial public hearing.
Yeah, we need to hear from the applicant.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just staying right up front. What, someone's going to have to be very compelling for me to not want to go forward with this.
Let me just point out that the last three or so paragraphs that Lisa read from her staff report is a correct summary of the law regarding the ADA and our obligations once we have determined that there is a person with a medical dis, or other appropriate disability requesting reasonable accommodation, which, which does in fact include a variance that might otherwise not be appropriate. And would also point out that under the ADA, it's, it's inappropriate for us to second-guess the opinion of the medical provider as to whether or not a disability under the act exists. So with that in mind, it's now appropriate to hear from the public.
What about the applicant?
Well, the applicant can certainly speak.
Okay. Yes.
Good morning. I'm Tamsin Hayes from the Wititski Law Firm. We represent the applicant, Gail and James Campbell, and I have been sworn. The applicants purchased their home in 2010, and the pool and deck were there at the time they purchased it. At that time, they wanted to add a screen enclosure right away, and they hired a contractor who went down to the city and tried to get a permit, and that's when they discovered that it was too close within the setback, that they needed to apply for a variance. They did not have the money to apply for the variance at that time. And Mrs. Campbell works full-time up in Rhode Island. Now she's getting ready to retire, so she's going to be here full-time when she retires, and she'll be using the pool more. And now they have the money, so that's why they went ahead and applied for the variance at this time. The pool cage is going to go around the existing pool and deck, so it's not going to intrude any further into the setback, it's just going to go up and around what's already there. Hurricane Irma destroyed their seawall, and they had it replaced along with a 45-foot dock this year in 2018. And the length of the dock, it runs about the same length of where the pool and deck are, and we feel that that's going to add further strength and support. Mr. Campbell has medical reasons, as was previously discussed, necessitating the installation of a screen enclosure so that he may use the pool on a regular basis. We did provide a doctor's note, and it does discuss a condition that he has which weakens his immune system and makes him more susceptible to developing infections specifically from mosquito-borne viruses like West Nile virus and encephalitis. He also has a condition which causes lower back pain, and his physician has indicated that swimming in the pool, that type of exercise, will help him with that pain. He's also allergic to hornets. That's not in the doctor's note, but it is relevant. There was a news article published in the Tampa Bay Times in July 26 of 2018 where mosquitoes tested positive for Westphalonirus and encephalitis in Sarasota County near Venice. And there was also a news article in the Charlotte Sun dated September 6, 2018, where a Charlotte County resident was diagnosed with West Nile virus. So this is a concern of the applicant's. Mrs. Campbell is also more allergic to insect bites than the average person. She requires the use of antihistamines and cortisone treatment if she does get an insect bite. She can't go outside at night without being fully covered. She has to wear pants, long sleeves, and a hat. So they both would like to be able to use their pool on a regular basis, but have that protection of a screen enclosure around it. And that will significantly reduce their chance of getting insect bites and the health-related problems that go along with that. The pool cage will not obstruct views of the canal or present any hazard or harm to boats or wildlife in the canal. The next-door neighbors on each side of their home have consented in writing to the addition of the screen enclosure. And it's also a safety issue. Chapter, I mean Florida Statute 51529 requires certain safety features around residential swimming pools to prevent accidental drownings. There's, has to be some type of barrier there. The Campbells do have a fence for their backyard, but they prefer a screen enclosure as an additional and better safety barrier. And I just want to cite some prior precedents. There's two variances that our office has worked on in the past, they, that were approved. They were both in PGI, and they were a lot closer into the setback than this particular case. The first one is V dash 04-09. The property address is 841 Pamela Drive. That one was 6.2 foot into the setback. The property owners had a fence. There was no medical hardship in that case. It was just a safety issue. And the other case is V dash 01-09. The property address is 197 Maria Court. It was a 5.1-foot rear yard setback. Also, there was a fence in place, no medical hardship, but there was also a safety issue, and that particular property was located next to a bridge. So there was a lot of trespassers. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant? Nope? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on V 02-18, now is the time. Please make your way to the podium, state your name, and that you have been sworn. Anybody that wants to speak on V 02-18? Anybody like to speak? Last call for speakers on V 02-18.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously.
If I might.
Sure.
Just, just, because we don't get that many variances, I think it may be helpful for me to make a few comments. Each variance has to stand on its own facts and precedence of other variances, which presumably were decided upon the facts of that particular request, should not be used in determining whether this variance should be granted. The fact that the pool cage might be safer than the fence and the desire to make a safer property is not also relevant, because that would apply to anyone. And in the absence of any evidence from a medical provider of Mrs. Campbell's particular disability, whatever testimony with respect to that shouldn't really enter into your consideration. But we have had sufficient evidence with respect to Mr. Campbell's disability to warrant a reasonable accommodation in this case.
Thank you.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the V 02-18. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next we have one second reading, which is PD 02-18. If you would like to speak on that, PD 02-18. It is not a public hearing, but there is a comment time for that one item right now. If anybody would like to speak on PD 02-18, second reading. Seeing nobody rising, we will move into PD 02-18.
Yes, and this is the second reading of the ordinance, which will read by title only. The ordinance of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, amending the conceptual site plan previously adopted with ordinance number 1801-14, adding a new site-specific plan for the westerly one-half of Lot 15, 4.52 plus or minus acres, generally described as 24420 Airport Road, Puntagorda, Florida, and more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here, too, providing for certain modifications to the regulations applicable to the development, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Move approval, PD dash 02-18?
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve PD 02-18. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Go build it. Go get it, go get it going. Okay, next we've got the consent agenda. I'll ask any council members if there's anything that they wish to pull for discussion purposes. Nope.
No.
Move approval.
We got to take citizens' comments on consent agenda items, which would be approval of the minutes, resolution for Habitat for Humanity, and then urban design has a resolution as well.
Invoices.
Invoices.
Good morning, Gary Skillicorn. This is in relation to the minutes of the last council meeting. I'm reaching out to the council to address the disparity between the council's discussions concerning repurposing of the old library at the last council meeting and the action taken. I was in attendance, reviewed the minutes and the video. For those present and those that reviewed the video, the outcome was that the three proposed uses would be sent to the county administrator for consideration. A 13 September letter was sent to Commissioner Doherty, not Commissioner Constance, nor who represents Puntagorda, nor to the county administrator. I quote from the letter signed by Mayor Kiesling. I do not know who was the author of the letter. Quote, "City council consensus is that priority should be given to programs which focus on Puntagorda and Charlotte County diverse culture and rich history, such as the Cultural Heritage Center of Southwest Florida and Charlotte County Historical Center Museum," end quote. The mention of priorities was never discussed. The letter clearly represents a different outcome or spin, not supported by the discussions. What happened? I think the council needs to address this disparity. Further, I want to thank Councilman Cummings for getting the discussion on the agenda. I've been trying for months with no success. It was suggested that it was already decided. At last, I had my day in, in, in court. I do have a question of the appropriateness of Mr. Cummings as principal advocate of the Cultural Heritage Center, using his position on the DA's to support his and a family member's position. Would he have abstained if a vote was needed on this? I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Anybody else speak on the consent agenda?
Good morning. For the record, Mike Mansfield, CEO for Charlotte County Habitat for Humanity. I just want to thank the council this morning for taking up the position of a trade with Habitat for some land that we own, that the city can utilize for the purpose that they need for drainage, and to swap that with a piece of property that we can build a house for a family in need. So I just wanted to, on record, thank you for considering this today, and appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on the consent agenda? And there was an invoice from Icard Merrill on that consent agenda as well.
Move approved.
Well, I wanted to note that the minutes had been amended from the last city council meeting regarding the library.
Yes, I, I've received some comments about those minutes, and I, we did go back and listen and, and made some revisions, and if you'd like to consider that, or if you would like to take that up and discuss them further, that's, that's council's, that's your decision.
I'll, I'll speak to that if you want me to.
Sure.
It was me that sent the email to Karen over the weekend, and I asked her if the minutes could be amended to make notation of the three specific uses that we recommended at our last council meeting. So the minutes have been amended to reflect those three items, and at, to that extent, I would make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the revised minutes.
Second. We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay. Next, we move into the regular agenda, so now would be the time, citizens' comments on all regular agenda items. So we have the fiscal year 2019 strategic plan. We have addition to the building division staffing. We have appropriation of funds for purchase of land, survey, and closing costs for Buckley's Pass. We have the project priorities for the special use fund. We have discussion regarding downtown merchants, farmers market, LBT. We have discussion of design standards for electric, electric vehicle charging station. And we have discussion of CARF accreditation of residential treatment programs. So if you would like to speak on any one of those items, now would be the time. Take the podium to my right. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good morning. I'm Dick Carr, president of the Southwest Florida Vietnam Mall Incorporated, and I would just like to say thank you very much in a pass for all your support and for the special fund, if you see fit. I understand your project basket is overflowing in Puntagorda, but I would like to request that if you can see fit, the Veterans Park Phase Two, which the council approved a bit over a year ago, we could sure use some help there, and any, any amount of help would be, would move us along. As you know, we broke it, your staff broke it into six different individual projects, and any amount of funding, we can move one project after another. To bring you up to date, we had four bids on the parking on Red Asplinade, and the parking should, construction should begin as soon as the rains quit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on regular agenda items?
Sherry Lenora, representing Smart Growth Puntagorda. I want to talk about the strategic plan. When in June, the city sent a letter to over 30 Puntagorda organizations requesting citizen input to the 2018 strategic plan, Smart Growth Puntagorda was happy to be included. One of our strategies after all is ensuring, in ensuring our mission, is to inform and motivate citizen involvement in city planning while promoting dialogue among residents, business owners, and city government leaders. So we were all in and prepared to answer the city's call. We prepared to mail out to over, our over 400 supporters, asking them for their input as requested by the city. We attached the May progress report the city had forwarded and urged them to think in terms of broader rather than singular purposes, and consider the five strategic priorities the city had outlined. We even went one step further, understanding that most people would not necessarily spend the time to read the actual May strategic document nor understand it. We developed thought starters for each of the five priorities in hopes of generating interest and understanding. While the citizen response was not overwhelming, we were pleased that many citizens took time to engage and offer their input. Some were original, some repetitive, some not very well-written, but always clear to us that the citizens welcomed this opportunity to have their voices heard. This is a theme we have heard over and over again from the groups we speak to, the emails we receive, and the posts on our Facebook page. We were encouraged that the city had been inclusive and asked for citizen input, and hoped this communication could continue. We prepared a report and forwarded the responses to the city manager's office as instructed. So the discussion of the citizen input to the strategic plan at the last council meeting was disappointing, to say the least. With the exception of a few items, the suggestions were dismissed as repetitive, irrelevant, editorial, not in the proper form, not feasible, not in the city's parameters. And yes, many of the suggestions were not in the correct form and awkward, but what a lost chance for citizen, for reassuring citizens that the council was listening to them. And an important, important teachable moment was lost when citizens could have had been informed was of what was in the city's parameters and what isn't, what is feasible and what isn't, and the logic behind the strategic priorities. Smart Growth Puntagorda reached out to our members, and we worked hard to create new Smart Growth Punta Gorda reached out to our members and we worked hard to create meaningful input, only to have our work casually dismissed. To try to foster a dialogue between citizens and the city government, we suggested the future requests for city input be handled differently. Why not have the city manager or staff sit down with concerned citizens in a workshop format and work through their input? Citizens don't understand city ease, unfortunately, but we have an educated, motivated citizenry that we would like to part, that would like to partner with the city to make our city the best it can be. With the support, they can develop appropriate input that will fit the format the city requires, understand the governing process, and perhaps most important, feel they're invested in the city's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, regular agenda?
Good morning, John Wright, Punta Gorda Chamber, here representing Jerry Priscilla from the Downtown Merchants Committee of the Chamber who couldn't be with us today. Just addressing this issue of the local business tax and the Saturday farmers market. The farmers market has been in existence for 11 years now and I don't know whether you're aware, but our local business tax invoice this year exceeds $4,000. We are being charged per person for each vendor that attends that market. Jerry wants to reiterate that market, that market was brought up Punta Gorda 11 years ago when you could put a bowling ball down Marin Avenue and nobody was there. It was put there to bring foot traffic to all of our businesses in downtown. If we have to continue to pay $63 per vendor at the maximum throughout the year, then we're going to have to completely change, well, I'd say we, he will have to change all of the rules of that market to exclude nonprofits, political campaigns, and anybody that isn't being in any of those categories that will have to go because we simply can't afford it. We can't afford to pay for musicians or artists who are there simply to add to the ambiance of the market, which is a huge success for our city. From the chamber perspective, if I can just change hats, we would like you to consider not putting the farmers market as a flea market as is currently listed in the code in the ordinances. If we make an exception for the flea, for the farmers market and put it, not an exception, but create another category for a farmers market, then treat it as one entity and this problem will go away. But right now, that farmers market is in jeopardy of losing at least a third, if not more, of its seasonal people attending every Saturday. And, you know, as you see it in the, in off-season, the numbers are drastically different and I did provide those with you. So you have a weekly assessment of the highest number that we have, which is in March, and the lowest number which we have, which is right now in September. So I hope you'll give that favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for regular agenda? Make your way to the podium. Okay, we'll move into the regular agenda. We have four items under budget, the first of which is the 2019 strategic plan.
We made the changes as requested. I'm not going to go over all of the changes, but we've tightened up the strategic plan action items. We put in there timeframes, costs were appropriate, but definitely timeframes, and so we are ready for you to see whether or not you want to adopt it. It goes hand-in-hand with the budget. I know we have one comment.
Yeah, I, on page six, the third goal was to strengthen and diversify the city's tax base to increase the commercial base. That was the original goal and we combined it with a thought from a resident and we added through annexation and I think that what we meant to say is, well, or for example, annexation. For example, through annexation. So annexation is one way that we could increase the commercial tax base. So I would just like to suggest that we put a, a for example in there.
Yeah, that's good.
Mm-hmm. And I do think that, you know, in our discussion, we really weren't trying to dismiss anyone, but was, I find in my tenure here on city council, quite often residents move here and they don't understand the history or whatever has gone on, you know, and so it's educational process and I think that I'm, I'm really happy to help educate people while at the same time listening because sometimes their, their unique observations can help provide some, some insight that we perhaps might overlook. So I think it's, the exchange and dialogue is always welcome and it's a good thing.
Yes, it is a good thing. And I feel like we went through, we went through all of it, one by one.
I would like to request that in future years, we do this as a workshop and involve the citizens and maybe have it be an interactive workshop and we work through the entire process with citizens involved in it and business owners if they want to be involved in it and just do it workshop style and have it be a brainstorming session. I think we'll get much more out of it, it'll be a much more effective document. I think everybody will feel inclusive at that point. I feel like this was, this was our decision, this document right now was our decision of what input we received and what we weeded out of it and what we deemed to be repetitive and duplicate and all of that sort of thing. So I would really think it would make a lot more sense to just have a separate workshop altogether next year and in future years to involve everybody that wants to be involved.
I would, I would say, as a step, I would also welcome people to continue to provide input in the way in which we have been, but I would agree that some kind of a...
And I think we need a facilitator to do it. And, and I think that it should be something where we can, we can, we can go through all of the suggestions, maybe people submit suggestions on pieces of paper and we put them up on a brainstorming board and then prioritize everything because I think that will really help us have a much more effective document for the finished product.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think there's still a lot of consensus out in the citizenry right now that they didn't feel really inclusive in this document because we did go through and weed out a lot of stuff two weeks ago. So just to that end, I would like to suggest that we do that.
And I think too, to the point that was made, what are the parameters? The operational, the operational items were not included because they're operational. So somehow conveying a better message on what type of input we...